Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting. Please take a moment and silence your cell phones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have one proclamation, and that is a proclamation declaring National Day of Racial Healing. And Kimberly Archie is here, I know, and if you have anyone else you want to bring up, please do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm Kimberly Archie, Director of Equity and Inclusion here at the City of Asheville, and we're very excited today to recognize National Day of Healing, again, for our second year. Something different this year than what we had going on last year is that we've actually stepped a toe, as a city, into the racial healing process with the community. And the way that we've done that this year is that we used some of our general funds in the Office of Equity and Inclusion to, we coupled it with a mini grant that we received from the Government Alliance on Racial Equity, and we were able to put out RFQ, RFP-type of a request out there. We received 35, I think, applications altogether for some mini grant funds by groups, individuals, people that are considered racial healing practitioners in the Asheville area that were interested in these mini grant funds. We ended up selecting eight, and we have some representation from that cohort in the room with us today that are going to receive this proclamation. And so, I'd like to call up Michael Hayes, Cassia Maatafale, Pancho Beramejo, and Dwayne Barton, if they're in the room still. And so, as we continue, as a city, to recognize the need for racial healing, we hope that we will be able to deepen our work in that specific area so that we can work together with the community and work towards more racial healing. Thank you.
Is it on now?
It is on.
Okay. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas we understand and recognize that there is a racial divide in Asheville and this country, that we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias and discrimination, and build an equitable and just society so that all people can thrive. And whereas all people have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments, and people of color experience unique obstacles that prevent their access to opportunity as a result of historical and current systems, policies, and practices. And whereas the economies of Asheville and Asheville communities and across this country are oppressed by racial inequities that exist across systems and structures, and whereas every individual has the capability to make a change in perspective that can have a profound effect on their neighbors and an entire society. And whereas if we all activate the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel the City of Asheville forward as a unified community where racial biases and racial inequities will become a thing of the past. Whereas racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the economic, education, social, physical, mental, and overall well-being of all of us. Whereas Asheville has a unique responsibility and opportunity to transform institutions and systems by using a specific lens to change policies, practices, and procedures that address racial inequities while simultaneously ensuring everyone is better off. Whereas Asheville, the City of Asheville, in conjunction with others throughout the United States of America, acknowledges the National Day of Racial Healing and commits to taking action as a municipality to make systemic changes in policies and practices that foster racial healing and advance racial equity and supports racial healing spaces, places, and activities through mini grant funding. Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim that this city honors and recognizes January 21st, 2020, as National Day of Racial Healing in Asheville, and urge all people to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited to them individually, as a means to working together to ensure the best quality of life for every person.
I have to think twice about this. First, I want to thank the City of Asheville for the proclamation. But as we move forward, the proclamation means a lot, but in my, me navigating as a black man through this community, and me seeing some of the obstacles that we as black people have to go through, and I don't want to say people of color, because I don't want to get it confused with people of color, meaning my Latino brothers and sisters, as compared to me being a black man. But, and we're going to be intentional about this, the racial healing grant was fine for the amount of money it was for us to start, to start the work. But in order for us to be recognized as doing the work, it's going to take more than just, you know, us proclaiming that this certain day is going to be a day of racial healing. It has to be seen, it has to be really addressed, it has to be addressed intentionally. I brought my six and seven-year-old here today so that can actually see how the process works, and hopefully I can bring them more, but they got basketball practice in a few minutes, so we won't be here that long. But for me, it's not, I won't see the fruits of the labor, but I want my six and seven-year-old to see the fruits of the labor. So I don't want this to be just, okay, we're going to make this a day, let's be intentional about the actions we're going to take in order to make this day really mean something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Time for practice. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Council, do you have any questions, comments, or a motion regarding the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the Consent Agenda? If so, you will just need to raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Are you, there was a second. Yes, sorry, here. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Okay, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are done with the Consent Agenda. Tonight, we have, under Presentations and Report, the Manager's Six Month Report, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Campbell. We're focused on transit tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think you've given pretty much my introduction. At these meetings, I'm going to try to provide, with staff support and help, information on your strategic initiatives. This particular update is going to be on transit and involves in your focus area of transportation and accessibility. We provided some of this information at an earlier meeting at your work session, but we wanted to cover it again in a little bit more, more detail. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Morris to provide that update. Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening, Jessica Morris, Assistant Director of Transportation. First, I just wanted to start out by bringing, bringing forward and reminding everyone that this is, implementing the Transit Master Plan is one of the primary strategies of the council. Specifically, it is Strategy E2, and it calls for implementing the first-year recommendations of the Transit Master Plan in the short term. And I wanted to, you know, note that we did successfully launch a service increase on January 5th. It was not all of the recommendations of the first year of the Master Plan, but about half of them, and represented about a 25% service increase, which is substantial. And we worked diligently on that from the moment, well, before the moment you passed the budget to January 5th, and we continue to work on that. And I would like to report that we've received a lot of positive feedback so far. We had some good media attention. There were a lot of steps involved in doing this increase, not, you know, the least of which was new maps and schedules, but there was a lot of attention and detail paid to looking at our existing routes, trying to make sure that we could achieve better on-time performance, and implementing new routes as well. We have added frequency on some routes, and so, you know, I want to make it clear that this is not, not the end, this is just the, just the beginning. We have a lot of great work ahead of us, lots of big work ahead of us, but it's important to also celebrate what we've achieved. So, and then, you know, the downside is that, right now, in our current fiscal year budget, we are approximately $500,000 over budget, looking forward to the end of the year. And there's two primary reasons for that. One is a slight underestimation of our fuel usage and electricity usage, but really, the bigger, the bigger piece of that is related to our paratransit service, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The chart at the bottom of this slide shows how, over the last few years, and up to what we're projecting for this coming fiscal year, the increases that we've seen to paratransit, much of which is related to the number of users and the miles of the trips of those And just to remind folks a little bit about what paratransit is, it is, it's a contract that the city has with Buncombe County, Mountain Mobility, and it provides door-to-door transportation service for eligible riders that have a disability. So this is something that the city is required to provide. If you have, if you have a public transit agency with a fixed route system, like we do, then we also have to provide a similar and equal service to folks with disabilities. And so, we've seen that service get used more, which is a good thing, but with that, we also have seen increased costs.
Just to add, we provide more service than is required by the federal government.
Correct, I forgot to mention that. So historically, the city has provided more than the minimum federal requirement. So the federal requirement for paratransit is to provide that service within 3/4 of a mile of your fixed route service. So if you imagine our transit routes, and you draw a buffer of 3/4 of a mile around those routes, that would be where you would have to require, or you would have to provide paratransit service. However, the city has, has historically gone above and beyond that and treated kind of the city as a whole, the city limits as a whole, and provided that service. Back in October, when we did our last transit update, council asked us to continue to monitor the budget for this current fiscal year that we're in, to see if there'd be an opportunity to implement the last portion of the first year of the Master Plan, and that consisted of extension of the hours of operation. And so, after October, we worked diligently to come up with a cost estimate for that, working with our contractor to really dial in on what would be necessary to extend the hours of operation. And you can see there's lots of, lots of things that we considered as part of that increase. We've estimated that it will cost approximately $1.1 million, and that represents a full year, so that represents a 12-month cost to extend the hours of operation, which would essentially complete your Strategy E2, which would be to implement the first-year recommendations of the Transit Master Plan. As far as trying to do that in the current fiscal year that we're in, it would be, it would be challenging, to say the least, because, primarily because we're in, in a $500,000 shortfall, but to then add that service in the next several months, not only would it logistically be challenging, but it would also be financially challenging. And this slide, it represents what the Transit Division has submitted for the upcoming fiscal year 2021 transit budget. The base budget is, is quite a big jump from our current fiscal year budget. It's adding $2.5 million. The bulk of that is to annualize what we just implemented on January 5th, so to take that from a six-month cost to a full-year cost. And it also includes the expected substantial increase to paratransit that we're going to see in the next year, as well as the increases in fuel and electricity. And then, we've also submitted enhancement requests, and the first, we submitted two of them. The first one is what I just talked about with the cost estimate for the completion of year one of the Master Plan, which will be about $1.1 million. Embedded in that number is some funding for operational software updates and purchase of new software. As we, as our system grows, our technology needs grow, and so we have to be able to, you know, continue to grow that resource. And then the second, the second enhancement request is to do the second year of the Transit Master Plan, and the estimate for this is also $1.1 million. I would like to say that that is a looser estimate, because we have not sat down with our contractor and really dialed those numbers in, but based on the, the level and the number of service hours that it represents, we expect that to be the cost, including fuel. And the Transit Master Plan Year Two adds a north-south cross-town route and adds frequency to two of our existing routes. So in summary, we successfully launched the first half of the first year of the TMP, and we are unfortunately in a, in a shortfall right now in this current fiscal year budget for transit, so we're not suggesting that it's likely to be able to implement the second half of the first year of the Master Plan, but it is something that we have submitted for consideration during your upcoming budget process. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Got a question. The, can you flip back to the previous slide? Okay, so the 1.1 for, in the second set of things, the additional service, is that, so you're asking for 1.1, which would be a full year of the extended hours. Are we actually thinking that we could get to implementation of that by July 1? Or are we, are we really talking about allocate the money in July and then start the service in January? Or some?
The, I wanted to show the
The full cost.
Worst-case, yeah, the full cost, because, you know, just like we were talking about in the budget workshop, what you commit to for a partial year
That's right.
Is, is, you know, keep it going. So I, I do not expect that we would start July 1. It would be logistically very challenging for, for, not only for us, but for our contractor. So I think a start time of October 1 would be the earliest that we would feel comfortable with making that change.
Okay, well, October 1 is better than January 1, so it's great, thank you.
Jessica, I have three questions. I'll make it hopefully pretty quick. The first is, you mentioned we have a half-million-dollar deficit this year for paratransit. Previous slide also showed that next year, we're anticipating about a $600,000 deficit, around that same amount, for fiscal year 21. Can you just explain again, why is that, why is that happening?
Okay, well, it's a, it's a combination of a couple things, well, maybe three things. First of all, we've seen higher ridership and longer trips, so that's part of the increase. The, the second thing would be, if you look particularly between what we've estimated for this current fiscal year, so the second to last column versus what we're estimating for next fiscal year, that jump has primarily to do with the contractor, so we contract to the county, and then the county contracts to an operator, and their contract between the county and the operator, it ends this fiscal year. And so there will be, undergoing a negotiation process for that contract, and the expectation is that the rates that we have had locked in to the current contract will go up, based on what we're seeing across, across the region for paratransit. So that is the primary reason for that jump. The, the third reason has to do with our contract with Buncombe County. They have been, they have been graciously subsidizing the city's cost for that, and so they've been providing around $400,000 a year and paying about 40% to 50% of that contract. And so, they have asked us to budget so that we are not, that they are not having to continue that subsidy, and so
So they're eliminating the subsidy.
Correct.
Right.
That's been their request, and, and they, they talked with us early on this year about that, and working towards that being the case for FY '21.
So two other questions. If you could flip back to the other slide that had the $2.5 million at the beginning, I think it's a little further, that's it right here.
This one?
Yeah, so, so, so we've got $2.5 million in the base budget. Again, that is, that is simply maintaining the same level of service for the full year next year.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to cost an additional $2.5 million. In terms of, so that's, that's the dollar amount. In terms of percentage-wise of budget, what is, what is that, what is that roughly? Do you have a sense of what that is operationally, what that, what that percentage, what percentage increase would be?
From this current year to next?
Yes.
Like 20%? For a budget person, about, I think about 20%.
We can find that number, but it's, I mean, it's not like 3% or 2%.
No.
It's a very, it's a very substantial amount. So the third question is, and this is, I'm repeating a lot from our previous work session, there's some folks here who haven't been here, but there's been some discussion from, from folks about instituting fare-free transit, and that perhaps being a, a concept that we could think about. One of the things that I learned from the budget session that I didn't realize, and just wanted you to confirm, is that if we move to fare-free transit for regular service, we would also have to move by law to fare-free transit for paratransit, which in all likelihood would increase our costs and would also increase usage, because those folks who have to pay a little bit now, wouldn't have to pay anything to, to use the paratransit system. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we are only allowed to charge for paratransit twice as much that we, that we charge for fixed route, and so our fares for fixed route are a dollar a ride. So if we went to zero fare, then zero times two is zero. And I think that it's important to note that, that, I mean, fare-free is something that the city's been interested in for a long time. I think it's great, but we also have to be careful that we couple that with increased frequency on our routes, because you're going to see a huge demand increase. That happened during the trial that you guys did for a summer. I can't remember when that was, maybe like 2006 or 2008, but there was a very large service, a demand increase, and that's what every other city that's done this has experienced. And so you don't want to make things, make, make it free, increase your demand substantially, and then not have the service to make it worthwhile. You don't want to leave people on the side of the road because you can't fit them on the bus.
And since we're repeating things that we talked about at the budget work session, some members of the community have suggested that our buses are not at capacity, or they're, they're not full, and therefore fare-free really wouldn't that, that would fill up our buses as opposed to cause, cause an overage. You, earlier today, said that you would not characterize our buses as not full, and that, that we are on several routes somewhat at capacity. You don't have the final numbers, but after the January, even after the January 5th increases in service, there are some routes that will be at capacity, and therefore a fare-free transit, really, it would put
It would strain the system as it is.
Right. And therefore, the idea that it's just a loss of revenue is not really, is not really reflective of the correct situation. It would act, there'd also be not only the loss in revenue of about $700,000, possibly more with the paratransit, but also we would almost be required to have more services. So it could be a, a significant increase to the budget, and that is not contemplated anywhere on this slide.
No, and it's not contemplated in the Transit Master Plan either. Yeah, so it's, it's much more than the loss of the fare box revenue, it's, the cost is a lot more than that, because we would need to add service. And, you know, obviously, every transportation system, whether it's cars or buses, there's a peak, and there's a not-peak, so there are times of the day when it's less crowded. But one of the differences with transit and roads is that the road is the road, it's there. And with transit, you can't just, you can't just like buy a bus that you're going to use during the peak, you're going to use it the whole day, and you have to account for those costs. You can't just like get extra drivers for peak hours and then let them go home. It's, it's a much more complicated thing.
Thank you. Since we're repeating things from the budget session, I will point out that, you know, I'm, we have, none of us have been in the conversations that you all have been having with the county, and yes, they've been very generous to subsidize us for this period of time. It's unfortunate that they're withdrawing that, because as, as we all know, those of us who live in the city also live in the county, and the county is primarily, if not exclusively, responsible for health and human services, services, of which this is one. And I, I would hope that the county might reconsider this in the course of their budget negotiations. Certainly not eliminating the existing subsidy, and, and perhaps even picking up additional subsidy, so that we can do what we are uniquely positioned to do, which is to expand the service. The county cannot expand our service, but the more money, the more revenue that we have to put toward covering paratransit, the less we, the potential is, the less we get to expand service. We know our people need expanded service. That means we have to expand paratransit service as well. Again, I think that the, between the, the two things that the city and the county can do, the county is better positioned, particularly if they're poised to make additional investment in transit, to invest in paratransit, and continuing to cover the subsidy and increase that, so that we don't have to, and we can get to implementing our plan and improving service for our residents as fast as we possibly can. So feel free to take that message back to them. I'm sure they're all watching, but
We will.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. Our presentation.
Okay, that is our only presentation under Presentation and Reports for tonight. We have a few public hearings. Let me see if we've got. The first one, Item A, is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously-approved conditional zoning approval, Ordinance Number 4602, for the Radlofts Project Urban Place Conditional Zone located at 146 and 179 Robert Street, otherwise known as the old Dave Steele site, to revise conditions related to affordability. And Jessica, you're already here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This is, as was stated, an amendment to a previously-approved conditional zoning. We have, council has seen this project a number of times, and I provided a summary of, a very brief summary of those different reviews in the staff report. The project as a whole The project as a whole was approved initially back in 2013. And then there's been a short series of amendments. The first amendment had to do with revising the actual site plan and the mix of uses. And then we have been back again to kind of fine-tune the conditions. As council knows, with the conditional zoning, we have that list of conditions that are specific to the approval. And we don't allow for much deviation at all administratively from the way that those conditions are spelled out. And that's why when there is a change proposed by the applicant in the course of their pursuing having this project come to life, we'll often have to come back for these amendments. The last time that we were back, that staff was back before you, we kind of put a range into the conditions, a range of a minimum and maximum for number of units, for number of parking spaces, to allow for some of that flexibility. This amendment is specifically just related to the condition that is prescribed in number eight. That related to the amount of affordability. The condition that was in that last approval was very specific and provided that the applicant would have 5% of the units designated as affordable with the remaining 95% of the units leased at a workforce housing rate. The proposed change... The only change that's proposed right now with this project is detailed on the screen and in the staff report to revise that affordability component so that the applicant would provide at least 10% of the overall number of units at the affordability up to 80% AMI for a period of 10 years. So it's a reduction in the overall amount of affordable units. They were all designated as affordable in some fashion. And this proposal is for that. Just 10% of the number of units would be dedicated as affordable.
To clarify that, can you... So it's my understanding that workforce, which is... It's not a federally defined concept, but we define it as between anything above 80% of AMI to 120% of AMI. Is that correct?
I'm definitely not the expert on that. But the expert has risen.
I see an expert.
Hi, Paul DiAngelo with the Community Development Department. Loosely defined, it's for 80 to 120% of AMI, but particularly looking at 100 to 120% of AMI, which is area median income.
So it... Under the old project, under the top bullet, workforce would mean that it could go up to 120%. Rents could go up to 120% of AMI or be basically...
Correct.
And what is market, then, definitionally?
Market falls in your 100% AMI range is kind of where your market is, which is why here in Asheville, we kind of look at the workforce housing as a little bit for 100 to 120. But by definition, it's anywhere between 80 and 120, if that makes sense.
So is there meaningfully much difference between workforce and market? If I'm understanding you?
Not based on HUD's area median income rents that are published once a year.
Okay, so that's sort of interesting. So this would provide for... The new proposal is... I'm looking up there. 10... Is it 10% of 80% AMI? And the rest would be at market? I mean, it kind of sounds like it's an even better proposal from an affordability standpoint, based on what you just told me.
Depending on where the market is. So technically, when you look at AMIs at 100%...
Like if our market got cheaper?
Correct. Right. Exactly. They don't always align in that simple fashion. And the 80... Up to 80... The 80% AMI is up to 80% area median income. So it's going to cover your 60 to 80 amount.
Wait, I want to go back. Sorry.
Proposed? But did I just make it more confusing?
No, no, no. You actually helped offer some clarity because I think many of us have been thinking that this is a... It looks on the surface like a big step back, which is, you know, which is disappointing. But what I... What I think I hear you saying is that it's not necessarily because essentially, the workforce is equivalent to...
Is overlapping with market.
Is overlapping with market.
Correct. And again, HUD's figures that we get published once a year are always a little bit behind. And why 100% of area median income is supposed to kind of fall within your market rates, usually it's behind that figure because right now, our market rate for a one-bedroom might come in at $1,200 a month. So just depending on where our AMI rents are, it's somewhat similar. But if you have a strong market...
Where does... You just said $1,200 a month?
Give or take on the market right now.
Where does that fall into our AMI?
That would fall into about 120% AMI.
Yeah, so you're right in the sense that it might be market, but we also had a limitation, you know? Because theoretically, if he goes to market and there's no definition about workforce housing, there was a limitation of 120%, whereas now there's not that limitation.
That's correct.
Was there expressly a limit of 120%? Or just, I mean...
With the workforce definition, yes.
There was.
Well, but aren't... Okay, can you... I mean, practically speaking, I thought what you were saying is because of the... How would that... Just apply it. I mean, how would that... When you say there's a limitation...
So you would take a look at where the market is right now and the absorption rate and exactly what the market's bearing for a one- or two-bedroom apartment. So even though the AMI figures from HUD might say, "Hey, you're doing workforce housing." And the limit for that at the 120% AMI is really going to be $1,200 for a one-bedroom. But the market's saying you can charge $1,300 to $1,400 for a one-bedroom. Then in the market, and if there's a low vacancy rate, they're going to go for that $1,300 to $1,400. If the workforce standards are set in place, you'd be capped at whatever those figures worked out to be, say $1,200 in that example with 120% of area median income.
And did we... So I don't know that we define in any of our current policies what workforce housing is. Did we define it back then?
I believe you did define it back then. In our policies, as we've moved forward, we've really focused on the under 80% area median income. I believe our Housing Trust Fund allows for some funding with 80 to 100% of AMI. But everything else we kept at 80% AMI or below.
Right. So Jessica, do you remember if it was expressly limited to 120%?
In that original condition and with the Land Use Incentive Grant that was a part of that approval, the rent caps were...
Capped.
Capped.
At 120%?
With a specific percentage that they were limited for increasing each year. So that was, I think it went out for a decade.
3%.
3%.
Correct.
Right.
So now the proposal wouldn't involve any land incentive?
It would not.
So it's... So... But it goes from 5% to 10%. So that's good. And the other piece of it could go either way.
Right.
Depending on the market.
Depending on the market.
And the period of affordability is the same. Can you... Maybe one or both of you talk about the 10-year period of affordability? That is less than we normally do. And I think it's less than we understand from our workshop on affordable housing last year that typical projects can absorb. I mean, I think what we normally think of is 80% AMI for 20 years. So can you talk a little bit about why this is less?
So yes, in most of our policies that we have right now, we kind of look at the 2080/20, which is 20% of the units at 80% AMI for 20 years. We met with Harry about the tools that we had available. But Harry, Mr. Pilos, wanted to stick to the 10-year affordability period because part of his parcel is in an opportunity zone. And part of that adjustment to the tax code of 2017 is there is a kind of a cash-out period after 10 years to where most of the opportunities and investors are going to want to sell that investment. And the cap is 10 years. So if you kept it affordable for 20 years, in 10 years, you'd be selling something with restrictions on it that may not have the value based on the opportunity zones investment that the investors are looking for.
Which was not the rationale before because we didn't have opportunity zones until two years ago. This is a new... Okay.
I want to clarify something. So staff met with the applicant to let the applicant know what tools the city had in its toolbox to be able to sustain more affordable units.
Correct.
And the applicant declined?
Yes.
Okay, any other... Is there any more to the presentation since I cut you off?
There's nothing really else substantial. Just to point out again that nothing changes with the site plan. Conditions, this is the only condition. And staff supports this as it does ensure a 10% affordability. And it was aligned with the comprehensive plan.
And we would want to add a condition that just spells out that Mr. Pilos does not want or will not come and ask for any Luigi incentive. Or any other incentives.
With the timing of the new Luigi policy that the window would have passed. So that's clear.
By not offering 20 years, there's no qualification for our tools by not offering that 20-year period.
Okay.
Does it... Do we have any other questions before the applicant speaks on this?
I'll reserve my comments to hear the applicant.
I'm Harry Pilos, Delphi Development, representing Radlofts. Again, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you may have. I'm just trying to get this project from a big hole in the ground to go vertical after seven years of work.
Harry, I'll start. When you and I met, and I think Councilman Haynes was in the room as well, your initial request to us was, "I need to lift all the affordability restrictions if I'm going to move this project forward." And our answer back to you was, "That's not going to work."
Well, no, no, no. It was workforce housing is the problem. Luigi's the problem.
Well, so what I said to you is, you know, "We have a lot of tools. Please look at them."
And we did.
And you did. And I appreciate that. And, you know, you've come back with something. Whereas at that meeting several months ago, you were, you know, you were at nothing. So something is better than nothing. I think this is... It's... This is just really... It's really hard. And, I mean, I understand that the Luigi is 20 years. Is the opportunity zone factor?
The opportunity zone is a totally separate issue.
So talk to us about...
This is a very expensive project with structured parking. You know, this is not a garden-style... I've got two of those going on. Those are easy. The fact of the matter is, this is a very expensive project, a very complicated project in a number of ways. And the 95%... Restricting 95% of the income stream from the apartments makes it where it cannot be financed, period. Now, my view, and I, you know, did it on White Oak in West Asheville doing 10% of the affordable housing component. My personal view is, that's the cost of doing business in Asheville. Fine, you know, we're going to play by the rules. But restricting 90% or 95% basically ensures that the project will never materialize.
And I get that. And the fact that it's taken six years, over six years, and it's not built. I mean, I get that. I'm... I mean, even though I'm not ecstatic about it, I recognize where the market is now. And I am okay with stepping back. My concern is the 10% at 80% AMI for only 10 years. I mean, we just approved a conditional zoning right before Christmas, the Cox-Ashland Project, which did 10... Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but did 10% at AMI, at 80% AMI for 20 years, right?
And did they get incentives for that?
And they did. They got the Luigi. They took advantage of that. And actually, a capped Luigi because it would have been extraordinarily expensive had they gotten a full Luigi. So extraordinary expensive to the city.
No, I got you.
So I guess, you know, what I'm... What I'd love to hear from you is why you chose not to use the Luigi policy.
Because the incentives don't match the penalty to the financing. And, you know, and five years ago, when we worked a very, very specific schedule, I think the mayor was probably the only person that was on the board, city council at that time, very meticulously done to try and balance private sector, public sector, okay, with the Luigi. And there was a window of time in which that made perfect economic sense. In the subsequent three years, it makes absolutely no economic sense at all and has, you know, put us in a... We're dead in the water.
Okay, any... Do you...
Guys, I tried to do the best I could on this. And without getting the 90% of the income stream restrictions lifted to go to market, I can't get it done. It's that simple.
And this is a Brownsville site as well?
Yes, it is. With all kinds of...
And did you resolve the stormwater situation?
Yeah, we did. And I see that as a separate issue. The storm drain that's running through the property that benefits 110 acres on Patton Avenue, basically, that direction. The numbers that came in were about $1 million to replace that thing. The city's contributing 250 so far as it stays within the public domain. And the other 750 we're paying for that's on our property. And, you know, to me, that's a kind of a moral issue. It needs to be done for the benefit of everyone. To go stick a big building on top of it, with it being as old as 92 years old but functioning fine, it's an infrastructure issue that we need to do it to protect our own property. So we are. And that's not part of the Luigi. That's a separate civil improvement issue.
Do you... I mean, do you have a theory about why one developer may be able to use the new tweaked version of Luigi? I mean, do they have more capital in it?
Mayor, no. We have no debt. We've got $5 million spent cash, no debt, okay? So we're as strong as anybody in the marketplace. There's so many variables that go into the project, any project. It's what they paid for the land at the time. It's what the site improvements are going to be, retaining walls, Brownsville, as you mentioned. In our case, we've got an extra million bucks to do a storm drain that really is not part of a normal scenario for other developers, how they construct it, how many parking spaces in the garage, whether or not they have retail. And frankly, this is all theoretical. We, as developers, take risk. We use these third parties, spend all this money to determine whether or not our hypothesis is correct or not. The investment market is telling me we're not going to invest in this project unless we have the potential to see upside on the income stream down the road as Asheville grows and prospers. And to restrict that, it's not worth the risk. What somebody else's project is, you know, the devil's in the details, Esther. And I don't know what they're doing right and maybe what I'm doing wrong. But having said that, you know that we assigned to Jay Adams, Structure Development, to take this project over, buy us out when I was sick last year. And frankly, he's in the same boat that I found myself in. So I don't think it's a personal issue and I don't think it's a company issue. It is specific to Radlofts, which is a gigantic structure. It's a big one. 437,000 square feet. It rivals anything a hospital's built.
And Harry, you said the opportunity zone is not really a factor, but is it, I mean, is it a factor for your investors? Are they... Is that 10-year timeframe when they're looking to cash out?
It could be. Not all the investors. We did an opportunity zone fund for White Oak Grove in West Asheville. We did an opportunity zone fund for White Oak Grove in West Asheville. You know, I don't know, 60, 70% went through the op zone, and the rest were just direct investors. Obviously, the funds that have been advanced so far on the project were not opportunity zone because they predated it.
Didn't exist, right.
The IRS conditions on op zone funds were pretty much up at speed. I would suspect that half, or maybe a little more than half--
Of your investors on this project are--
Of people, yeah, investors who are professional investors that would have an interest in Rad Loses when the numbers work. I would expect most of them to come out of the op zone. But keep in mind, too, the op zone was a 10-year window, and it, you know, it's now nine, soon to be eight, so the attractiveness of using that diminishes every month.
Yeah.
May I ask why you declined the city's assistance to add more affordable units?
It was my suggestion to do the 10%. I didn't turn down any proposal from the city for more affordable housing. It's my, my view as a local, been doing projects here for a while, to do 10% is what we do in Asheville. And so when I walked in the door to meet with city staff, it was, "I'll do the 10%, but I've got to get rid of the 95% Luigi workforce housing."
Do we know what the other opportunities were that were turned down, like to your question? I'm looking at Paul.
So when we met with Harry, or I met with Harry, to discuss this project and our tools, we just presented all the possible tools we had to offer, the Land Use Incentive Grant, the Housing Trust Fund, fee rebates, expedited review that we could offer Harry to be a part of this project, and we had a good discussion, but he had declined that he wouldn't want to use any of our tools to move forward, except outside of his 10% he was doing on his own.
Whatever, whatever he gets under the 10%, I mean, the fee rebates would be tied to the affordable units?
Correct, that's a policy for, that it's a 20, 80, 20% of the units being affordable to walk in the door with that policy. And I think Harry was deciding how he wanted to move forward, but then decided that he was going to do his 10% for 10 years.
And does, do you all have an opinion?
Right.
Right, right. Do you have an opinion about, I mean, you know, he's saying that he can't use these tools because the project isn't, he can't finance it. I mean, do you have any opinion about that, or are you, I mean, because, you know, we have had to change our policies because we've had trouble getting it right and making it work for the private sector to take advantage of the tools we have, and I guess I'm concerned we've got some doing it and some not doing it, and, you know, I guess--
I haven't fully looked at his, all of his numbers and his performance outside of our discussion, but knowing that it's in an opportunity zone, I'd imagine most of his investors were a partial, of them are going to be opportunity zone investors, so they're going to want to have that exit strategy at the end of that adjustment to the tax code for those 10-year period, which, like you said, is now down to nine or eight. But that's what I would imagine is, not to speak for Harry, but driving a part of that. I think in general, and we've talked about this at HCD, most developers can come to the table to do 10% units at 80% AMI for 20 years, depending on the type of bill that they're bringing forward, that they can do that on their own, within their own tools, again, depending on the build. Our tools really kick in when you're offering more affordability, is what we're looking to do with our community development, where it gets up to 20% deeper AMI levels, longer years.
So do you see a clash between the opportunity zone time period, payoff time period versus our city policies around affordability and the time periods that we're building in there?
Yes, and the aspect that opportunity--
How ironic.
That opportunity zones were brought forward as it was going to really pair well with affordability, but in the conversations that we've had around it, I don't see a pairing here--
Right.
--in the aspect of opportunity zones--
Because the periods--
Because at the end of the day, the investors are looking for the highest possible rate of return, and they're looking for that exit strategy.
And it's timed at 10 years or less?
Correct, for now, unless something changes in the adjustment to the tax code.
Interesting, okay, that's been informative. You'll have to use the--
What people are looking for in you as well. Providing affordable housing and taking that financial hit in the beginning and through a 10-year, 10-year period, say, for example, excuse me, it's a double whammy. That's a price that frankly, to my knowledge, all of the developers in Asheville, the multifamily, have been willing to do and receive some incentives, which we do not want. When you go beyond 10 years and you start looking at exit strategy, it's a double whammy. You're taking the income loss during the whole period, but you're also devaluing that particular unit that you built 10 years earlier when you sell it. And that's where the incentives from the city can subsidize and help take that double whammy burden out of the equation, that 10- to 20-year program. I think from a private sector perspective, that's where the value is. That's my two cents.
Any other questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Folks, this is a public hearing agenda item, so I'm going to open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, you'll have three minutes. Please begin by stating your name. Watch the lights on the lectern, they'll be green, then orange, then red. Okay, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Kristin Goldsmith. The project before you is a mediocre project at best. Yes, it includes some affordable housing, but this project was originally supposed to be 100% affordable at varying levels, with 95% of units rented at or below the city's baseline for workforce housing. Now the developer is asking to reduce it to just 10%. The city has said that our standard going forward for affordable housing is a minimum of 20%. At planning and zoning, staff acknowledged that this proposed change is in line with other projects that we've approved in the past. But if there's one thing that we've learned, it's that the old way of doing things isn't working. I was at the meeting when the developer claimed that he just couldn't make the numbers work. He said that he's already spent a significant amount of money on this project, and I can respect that. But he's also said that it's a difficult site with significant stormwater issues, as he said tonight, that need to be addressed. He expects this project will undergo significant changes through the value engineering process. So I wonder what will be on the chopping block next. For me, the applicant has given us every reason to turn down his request. This project does not meet our goals for affordability. I want affordable housing. I want as many units as we can get, but I am not willing to trade away the precious little land we have available for a mediocre project that will not serve the needs of our community. If this developer can't make the math work, maybe someone else can. I have stated many times that we need to bring our policies in line with our values. And so tonight, I'm asking council to consider the goals and the values we've staked out for our community and turn down this applicant's request. Thank you very much.
Okay, remember, there's no clapping, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I know that there's technically not a rule against clapping, there's a rule against disruption, so I'm sorry. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments, or motion?
I do have a question, so--
Who do you want, who do you want to--
This is actually for Maggie, or Paul, either one.
Maggie, Maggie's the issue of the--
So we adopted, we adopted a policy on opportunity zones a year and a half ago, I can't quite remember when. I've been looking in my email, because I think we were passing it back and forth at some point, Paul, and I can't find it, but can somebody put their hands on it in the next, before we take the vote?
What are you, what are you looking for?
Well, so there's language--
Stall for time here.
So there's language in there that basically said what it is that council is striving for, for projects in an opportunity zone, and I think it would be helpful to know, helpful to have that language in front of us so that we can make a determination if this project meets that, even in its proposed changed state, whether it meets that.
And I believe it was in October of 2018--
Eighteen.
And we followed the policy-length guides--
Todd, he knows, he's, jump out of your seat.
On opportunity zones.
There he goes.
Most excellent. Good teamwork there.
Todd's phone here, Director of Planning, but he found a news item on it on October 23rd, 2018. City Council passed a resolution to, quote, "Work with opportunity fund investors and take a proactive approach to offer guidance and opportunities and investments that promote equitable growth, development without displacement, and healthy communities of opportunity for all residents in and around opportunity zones."
Are you looking for the purpose statement or something?
I think, I think he just read it.
Well, then he read the new--
Equitable growth, development without displacement, and healthy--
And healthy communities of opportunity for all residents in and around opportunity zones, that I believe was Asheville one. I now have the resolution on Jessica's phone.
Got to love technology.
Whereas opportunity zone, where opportunity zones and funds were added as an adjustment to the tax code in the 2017 reform package, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, City of Asheville had five low-income census tracts, 2, 7, 9, 14, and 20 designated in the U.S. Treasury in May 2018 as opportunity zones. And whereas opportunity funds are being created to drive long-term capital into opportunity zones by using tax incentives to encourage private investment in these impact funds, whereas opportunity funds, if invested equitably, could spark catalytic development that creates economic opportunity and improves neighborhood quality of life, and whereas opportunity funds, if invested, with a focus on improving opportunities and outcomes for the residents, living inside the opportunity zones could lead to displacement of low-income residents and communities of color in addition to the loss of community assets and land.
Was that what you were looking for?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
I got a comment.
Do we have any other, just to--
So--
Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Yeah, now everybody give their phones back.
In our council check-ins, I had a couple of comments. One comment was the ability to be able to track resolutions as they pertain to what is coming in front of council. This is, this illustrates that. I'll leave that part alone. The second part is, I'm a bit disappointed in the recommendation from staff at this point, considering that what we just heard does not align with what we want. The opportunity zone, right down the street, is a predominantly African-American neighborhood, and this sort of development promotes gentrification. We had a huge budget, not budget work session, a work session in September of last year about affordable housing, and just to, and I've actually still got my copies of stuff from that work session, and I'll just go through some of the information that we were presented. Greater than 30% or 40, from the Bullen Report of 2019, 46% of renters are cost burden. Nearly 20% of renters are severely cost burden. Nowhere in the United States can a worker earning minimum wage full-time afford a two-bedroom home at fair market rate. In only 28 counties in the entire United States can a full-time minimum wage worker afford a one-bedroom rental home at fair market rate. The lowest income earners are the most cost burden. Most wages and salaries and incomes we produce in our area don't support the average housing cost in Asheville, both rental and homeownership. Aside from that, we talked about funding, subsidy investment for these types of projects. The city stated, "Invest on the front end, incentivize the developer, or invest on the back end, subsidize the renter or homeowner." Moving through all of this stuff, we've got all these different tools to incentivize affordability, and it looks like we came to the table with what we had, because we sat there in September and listened to a developer tell us exactly how hard it is to get a project up, all the soft costs that they have to put into that. So it, I'm bewildered at our recommendation here tonight to approve this thing, even after we had this big budget work, I keep saying budget work session because we had one earlier today, but we had this big work session about affordable housing, and based on the analysis, we wanted to recommend establishing a goal of creating 200 units per year, direct or indirectly. And I don't think we can do that with any sort of reduction. The original B1 conditions of this project stated, for those who maybe missed it earlier, 5% of the units will be designated as affordable by the city's standards. The remaining 95% of the units will be leased at or below the city's published 2015 rates for workforce housing as a baseline, assuming and including an annual increase of 3% based on the 2015 numbers. So now we come back, and we get in here, and we have this, this word soup of what is workforce housing and what is market rate housing, and somehow, they're both the same today. They both mean the same thing today. But the whole time we've been doing this thing, workforce housing and market rate housing didn't mean the same thing. And I'm not saying that to, you know, say that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, but I'm saying today, we want to, the proposal is to take away the 95% of workforce housing and increase the affordable housing to 10%, and the rest be market rate. That's, that's what I'm hearing. And, I mean, at this point, I, we know that, we know what the developers have to go through. I can't fault somebody for wanting to make money. That's, that's what, you're not doing it for charity, that's what is there for you. But on our end, as a city, we've made a commitment, not the developer, but we have made a commitment to affordable housing. And we came to the table with what we had, and how we got this recommendation without any of the stuff that correlates with opportunity zones and what we've passed in resolutions before is a disappointment to me. And I've never said I've been disappointed in staff, but I know how adamant I am personally about affordability and how that impacts people. And so I'll vote the way that I'm going to vote, but I'll say for the future, we just, Julie mentioned that we voted on the project last month, that I stated in our check-ins that I don't want that to happen again, where these sorts of things happen, and it's happened again. And I am not happy with the recommendation from staff. I can't fault the developer, you're doing what you're supposed to do. You want to make money, you got to make money, that's your thing, I get it. We made a commitment to affordable housing, not the developer. And so whatever the recommendations are coming from staff, they need to be accurate, they need to be researched with what resolutions we've done previously, so that we have our information. We're not full-time workers, we don't come in here every single day and work 40 hours a week. Some of us have full-time jobs, but we commit ourselves to the people that elected us to do the work. So whatever my vote is going to be, it's going to be, but I am not happy with this recommendation at all.
So I just, I would like to ask some clarifying questions, then. The goal of 200 units per year was at 80% of AMI, correct? And this would bring online 23 units at 80% of AMI, so--
With no subsidy from the city.
So the policy, though, says with subsidy, but this is being brought to us without a subsidy request. So, so I, we will probably have to be clear in directing staff that if, if a private developer proposes a project that doesn't use our incentive policies, that they can never recommend it. And I don't think we've ever said that, that staff can never recommend a project that doesn't use a, use one of the tools. So I, so I, before, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I want it to be clear, too. I just, I didn't know that we would, we had given that direction, and I think staff's looking a little confused, because I don't think we've ever said that they can't recommend a project that doesn't use one of the tools. And it's clear to me this project's not using any of the tools. It's, it's being proposed with 10% of, and at the same workshop we were at, the developer of affordable housing, who Deborah brought in, explained to us that private developers that do not have a subsidy cannot be expected to produce more than 10% of affordable units at 80% of AMI. So this actually kind of-- So this actually kind of falls exactly in line with what I thought we would be seeing if, if a developer is not using one of our tools, which they're not required. Now, if, if council wants to say, individually, I mean, of course, I'm never gonna support a project that doesn't use one of our affordable housing tools, which I think is what you're saying.
I mean.
Absolutely, for sure. That's, I, you know, everyone's individual decision. But, but it's, it's not, I mean, that, we, you know, I don't wanna throw staff under the bus just because this proposal doesn't include one of the tools because I'm just clear that it didn't use one of the tools.
No, I'm throwing them under the bus because here's the thing. Aside from that, it doesn't even, we just had two people get up here with cellphones and read some things that we passed about how we want projects done in opportunity zones. And it doesn't even align with that, aside from whatever else we're talking about. And we don't even have that information on the staff report. We didn't get any of that information in a check-in. So yeah, I'm throwing them under the bus.
Okay. Well, I, I, so from now on, if a project is, happens to be one of our opportunity zones, I guess we'll need to have a, well. I'm a little bit confused why it would matter in this situation, but I, yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to get a little clarity.
I would.
I guess a question for Brad would be, under the standards that we need to approve this, because this is not just something that we council wants. We have, we've got to follow the law on this. To, to what extent do we consider, or can we consider, the fact that something is in an opportunity zone? Which, which I assume is, is really going to be a question of how much this property could be sold for at the end. Is that something we can even consider? Much less have it hang our decision on?
Yes, Councilwoman Corporal, I would say that the law regarding rezonings for, for a conditional purpose requires the council to make three primary determinations. Number one, that it is consistent with the approved area plans that are relevant to that particular project. Two, that it is a reasonable project, including the conditions, and that it is in the public interest. That final determination being in the public interest provides a certain amount of legislative discretion to this body to make determinations along those lines. It is important to, to note that the city does not currently have any specific inclusionary zoning language in our ordinances regarding conditional zoning. So this issue is specifically not dealt with in consideration of what our approved area plans are currently.
So, so I guess my comments would, would be here. So I, I'm in support of this, this project. I think towards meeting our goal of providing affordable housing throughout the, you know, we, we, going, going back to that same, that same meeting, which, which had a pretty big impact on me. I think it was really helpful to talk to someone who's a developer in this area and to understand the difficulty of that, which, which, to be honest with you, I didn't quite appreciate until hearing that. Getting 23, 24 affordable units, even for 10 years, is a big deal. It is much more than what we will have. You know, we can, we can argue and question whether or not, you know, one could receive financing and the ease of receiving financing. I'm not a developer, but what was pretty clear to me from that meeting was that it's not easy to get financing here. It's not something that's a slam dunk. Those of you who were talking about the, the project we just approved, that had the twenty percent at, at, twenty percent, eighty percent, and, and talking, and talking about kind of capping the Luigi grant, as I recall, the developer actually said, look, I'll try to make it work. They weren't definitive about that because they hadn't gotten their financing yet. So it could be a situation where they try and, and they may, they may be coming back to us. I hope they don't. You know, with, with respect to, to staff recommendations, I, you know, obviously the more information is, is better. But, you know, as a council member, I, I, especially with, with those of you who are, who are presenting on this, I, I look for your independent judgment. I really do. And you are all professionals here. And, and that's what, that's what I look to do. As a council member, I have the discretion to decide to, to disregard that or it's, for, for competing, for competing reasons. But, but I, I think it's important as, as a council here to get your best professional recommendations. It may not be something that I think is the most important issue, but, but I want you all to continue to do that. And I have never felt among, among this group of staff that you haven't been providing that to us. And, and I hope you will continue to do so.
My last statement on the night is, I'm not gonna vote to gentrify my own community.
Okay, wait, can I say a couple things? So I, I, just going forward, I would love for, if, for projects that are in opportunity zones for flagged, for staff to flag that for us and, and maybe just to continue to remind us, include that language from the resolution or, or something, just so we know. We don't, we, we have not adopted any, any policies around opportunity zones. We have, I have been in conversations about that and kind of came to the conclusion that the resolution that we adopted would give us the leverage to kill really terrible projects, which I do not think this is. I do not think this is a terrible project. But to, 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 to turn away projects that really were going to displace and, and, and not be a benefit to the community that they're in. So it would be helpful for me going forward if, if we could know that. I have one more thing to say, but Harry, do you, you, you look like you wanna say something?
If you guys can't, done, or not done enough working with staff for six years to try and create a model, if that's not enough, I'm willing to spend another month, max, going through it and coming back. And I'm telling you that I personally believe, as a numbers guy, that the conclusion's gonna be the same. But the fact is, staff's worked in good faith for years on this and other projects. And as you well know, I'm, I'm doing my answer to workforce housing in West Asheville without any incentive. And I did it as a challenge from this body five years ago. I don't wanna be voted down and, and put this thing on hold for another year, which is absolutely crazy. So I will draw it. I'll spend another month working with the staff and anybody else to crunch numbers and do what we need to do and come back and see you in a month. Fair enough?
Thank you.
Harry, I think we're getting the language right here. You just said withdraw.
You gotta continue.
Continue, please. Okay.
Harry, are you gonna come back up here? I think the.
You may need to say something different.
I think what you mean is a continuance, not to withdraw because you don't wanna start over. You wanna, you, right. Do, Maggie, do you?
It'd be February 25.
That's fine.
So you're requesting to continue this until February 25th, working with.
I'll show them the numbers. We'll crunch through, give them whatever evidence you need.
No, let's do the 25th, give them a little bit more time.
Harry, I really, I appreciate that. I, I, I actually, I mean, I remember when this project first got approved, it was great, it was a great project. It was exact, it is exactly the right project for that spot. And, and I appreciate your persistence in trying to make it happen. That place needs mixed-use residential, it, it needs it.
It goes beyond affordable housing. This is going to change the neighborhood down there, increase retail activity.
I don't disagree with you.
So much more than that.
I don't disagree.
And this project is not mediocre. It is in the Class A category by every, every measure and a price tag to go with it.
Yeah.
Guys, I've been doing this for 22 years in this town. I can't tell you how disappointed I am right now.
So I'd make a motion to continue this project until at least February 25th.
Certainly.
We need a date certain, so the February 25th was the date, okay.
Oh, so, to February 25th, 2020.
This was the motion, and then, I'm sorry, Keith, you have the second? Okay, all right. We have a motion to continue the project to February 20th, the application to February 22nd. Do we wanna take public comment on that motion?
That's a procedural motion.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I just say one more thing about that project? Since I kept, I know, he left. But this is, this is really not, it's not so much for him as it is. One of the other key things we learned in that affordable housing workshop and that we know well from HCD is that the city cannot do this alone. We cannot meet our affordable housing needs by ourselves. We do not have enough money. And we need private developers to step to the plate. And, and I realize that there may be developers who don't wanna deal with the hassle of our tools. I, I get that. But we, but we need help. And, and I would, I, I want, I, this is an encouragement to, to private developers to take a serious look at our tools and figure out any possible way to use them. We have, there, there are so many. There are so many. There is, even though we don't have a ton of money, we have a lot of money that we can put on the table for these projects to make them go at, at the very least at twenty percent of the units at eighty percent AMI for 20 years. I mean, and, and I, in HCD, I'm a proponent of, of in perpetuity. But given where construction costs are now, that does not seem to be feasible in anybody's world. So I've stepped back from that. But we, we've, we've just gotta keep striving to meet that baseline of 20, 80, 20. We just have to.
Mayor, if, if I could just add a couple of things since staff got thrown under the bus, literally. I would like to clarify a couple of things because the Affordable Housing Work Session has been mentioned a, a number of times. We will be coming back to you in February so that we can, and, and this, my attorney may say this is too strong a word, but codify the direction. We, we really wanna be clear about what, what it is that you all directed us to do, particularly related to when we are using public resources. If you want us to think about if a private developer comes and doesn't want any of our resources, do we apply the same policy? We need to know that because that's, that's not what we were thinking. I mean, we, we can negotiate because the conditional rezoning process is a negotiated process. And we can negotiate all we can, but I'm gonna be honest with you. Whenever we get the opportunity to get one affordable housing unit, we take that seriously. And for 10 years, within that development, with access to those services. So we, 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 we hear you, we appreciate the feedback. But we will be coming back in February to make sure that we have, we're clear on what the direction was. Thank you.
I know this is difficult, but as it pertains to opportunity zones, I think it is another level of sensitivity. And it does require us to put a different lens on it. The last project that we saw in December is in a community that was, that's undergoing a lot of gentrification, same as the project over here. It is very subjective when you say that that is the best project for that area because some people would beg to differ very strongly. So when that is a, a spectrum of a project, whether they wanna go come 20, 80, 20, or they just wanna give us 10% affordable, I think just a common courtesy, if they have opportunity zones, lay it out. Because we have stated very, very powerfully what we're looking for when it comes to opportunity zone projects. Equitable, equitable development, anti-displacement, and another, another tenant, I can't remember right now. But it's very important that we take that into perspective as well and not look at a project, just a good project because we're getting what we get. It impacts other people who can't show up tonight, other people that we represent. So if that can, not meaning to, I know Councilman Young was not meaning to just totally squash you in this situation with his recommendation. But I would appreciate, and the community would appreciate, when it is an opportunity zone, until we figure out how to have more control, that you at least give us that perspective so we can make a way decision.
Okay, anyone else from the, returning into a work session?
Yeah, I don't mean to, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pile on. But I think, I do think that we need to be sensitive to that staff is not in a position to, to second guess and dig down into how people are getting their financing and that kinda thing. I mean, we don't have that expertise. So I, I think, I mean, I, I hear, I hear the request, but, you know, because they haven't thought about every, every possible option on the table, I don't think it's really fair what we're doing to the staff tonight. And I, I, I guess I would just ask that, you know, we kinda tone down the language around it. I think they're working diligently. They do amazing work. And so, you know, to publicly have this conversation feels really, it would be painful to me if I were a staff. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. The second item is a public hearing to consider amending the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan for the relocation, reallocation of an estimated $723,208 in federal Home Investment Partnership Program funds, which is in the form of a resolution regarding the same.
Welcome back, Paul.
Hi, good evening. Paul DeAngelo with the Community Development Department here tonight, asking action of everybody that an adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an amendment to the 1920 Annual Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnership Program, enabling the City of Asheville and the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium to relocate $723,308 for a total of $1.269,322 million in 1920 home funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Please just know that these home funds are overseen by the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, which is made up of representatives from our four-county region, Bumpcom County, Madison County, Henderson County, and Transylvania County. Home funds fund a wide range of activities, including building, buying, and rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership or providing direct rental assistance to low-income individuals and families. Home is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments designed to exclusively create affordable housing for low-income households. And you have the staff report in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Paul, question.
Yes.
I just, and don't get in the weeds with me because I know it's really easy with these programs. But how did the, how did this extra money become available for reallocation?
It wasn't extra funding.
Oh, okay.
With the Asheville Regional Home Consortium, we made in March, similar to the CDBG funding, where we do the allocations. The Asheville Regional Housing Consortium is looking at the tax credit applications that we receive first and let those go through the process with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. When those awards are announced in August, we come back with the other applicants who are doing different work with home funds. And then that's how that second part of the funding happens. This year, we had one of tax credit property that was awarded. And then that left us with the additional funding to go to the other partners.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
I think there were two other tax credits projects that didn't get awarded, is that right?
I believe so, yeah.
So all of that money just came back into the fund for reallocation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? I'm gonna open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to comment on item B on the public hearings agenda? Yes.
Cassia Maatafali, I just want to let y'all know, staff know, that the plans have not been updated since 2012 on the website, possibly further behind. So there's no way to really see what the action plan is on the internet.
Paul, do you want to address that? He's saying no, that's not correct.
No, we put those plans up. However, in the transition to the new website, there has been some difficulty in that transformation, so, or transition, so some things may have been missed. It was up on the previous site, all that information was moved over, but we're happy to check. But there has been some data that has been lost and needs to be re-pulled up.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will check it out.
And that could be again because of the transition.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the city managers to submit an amendment to the 2019-2020 Consolidated Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnership Program as outlined in the amendment summary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The, the last item is in parts. So we're going to hear first, actually, I don't have who we're hearing from. We're hearing from Barbara. And then we're going to open the public hearing, but then this requires two different votes, a vote under number two, C2, and a vote under number C3. Okay, everybody? All right, Barbara, please take it away. She has a presentation.
Okay, so tonight is the next step in the GO bonds that we are about to issue. So I'm going to start and kind of give a little history, especially for all of the people here who haven't been through this, you know, as much as we all have. The GO bond referendum in 2016, we actually had three referendums or referenda. They were for affordable housing, parks and recreation, and transportation for a total of $74 million that was approved by the voters on November 8th, 2016. So we got started on the projects, all the stuff that we're, you know, hoping to spend that money on. And in the interim, we have a debt model where we issue like construction debt, like as if a developer would do when they're building a house. So we do projects, we issue this interim variable rate, short-term debt, and then we refund it with what's called permanent debt. In this case, the first issuance of those $74 million in bonds. That, so this is the fir-, these are the first projects that are getting financed with those bonds that were approved. I'm over time, Maggie. Can I have a second? So it's about a $23 million total issue. It refunds the bond anticipation note, which was the interim financing. We're issuing some taxable bonds for affordable housing, which gives you all more flexibility with any property that we might purchase using affordable housing bonds, the, the, what you choose to do with it is more flexible with taxable bonds. And then we will issue the use, the usual tax-exempt municipal bonds for the parks and recreation and transportation portion. So these are, these are, these bonds are included in our long-term plan. They were funded through a tax increase in 2017, 18. So there is no additional cost to the taxpayers. This is just us taking what was a short-term debt to enable us to get projects done, refunding it, refunding it with long-term debt or refinancing. And it'll be 20-year debt, which is what we're allowed to issue in the state of North Carolina.
So we'll be doing this up to 75 million.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any questions?
Here's the council action.
Thank you for spelling that out for us. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion for first item, C2, the adoption of bond order?
I make a motion to approve the bond resolution on the proposed general obligation refunding bond, financing for the refinancing of existing debt.
Second.
Somebody got the second. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then can I get the second motion?
I make a motion to adopt, can I do the second one as well?
Sure.
I make a motion to adopt bond order authorizing the issuance of not
It's the resolution, the bond order was first, and now it's the resolution.
Okay, where is, where?
So the first one?
So the, oh, I need to start at the two.
I'm sorry, the bond order is the first thing that gets adopted, and then the resolution.
So we just did the resolution, didn't we?
Yes, so if we could
So we got to do it over?
Undo it.
Yes.
Or do it over?
Bond order first, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt, do I have to undo it first? Oh, I make a motion to adopt bond order authori-, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 23 million GO bond, GO refunding bond.
23.2 million, exactly. Okay, do we have a motion? We have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I would suggest, just so that we have this correct on the records now, if council would take a vote to ratify the original motion, we'll have these in the correct order.
Okay, do we have a?
And I'm sorry, Mayor, just a point of clarification. It says 23.2 here, on the suggested motion, it says 23 million. So I want to make sure that we
Which is it?
We're actually approving the right
23.2? Okay.
Excuse me?
23.2.
23.2, all right, then we have to do the whole thing over again.
No, we just, I added that it was 23.2.
You want to hear from our attorney?
I mean, I just clarified the motion.
We can make that clerical change on the record now, we're fine.
Okay, so now we need a motion to ratify the adoption of the resolution.
I make a motion to ratify the adoption of the bond resolution. I just leave that there.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Boards and commissions, turn it over.
Okay. So we, thank you. So the boards and commissions, I'm going to go through this in the order that it's on the agenda. The boards and commissions recommends that we reappoint Pratik Batka and Daniel Summerlin. That's a motion. And I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Civic Center Commission, the boards and, boards and commissions recommends that we re-advertise for the opening. I don't think that needs a motion. Downtown Commission, the boards and commissions recommends that the, that we appoint Robin Rains for the opening. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The Firemen's Relief Fund, we would, we would recommend the reappointment of Raymond Tweed and Barbara Whitehorn. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Human Relations Commission, we will be recommending postponing the appointments until June, and that does not need a motion.
Can I just ask a question about that? What is, does, does that impact the?
We'll have 13 members, and I don't think there will be any issues about doing
Okay.
business. It was a couple of people who had left before their terms ended.
Okay, all right. And the, and the, the numbers are still generally okay in terms of?
Yeah, they're still 13. So after much deliberation, we would recommend that the Metropolitan, that we reappoint Esther Mannheimer on the Metropolitan Storage District Court. And reluctantly, I've got a second. So I, with that, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was a joke. Recreation Board, the committee recommends that we re-advertise for, for those openings. For the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, the boards and commissions recommends reappointment for a two, two-year term for Darren Green and Tim Schaller, and to reappoint Carlton Collins for one additional year. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Sustainability Advisory Committee on Energy and the Environment, we recommend that we reappoint Ann Keller and Maggie Gulick, and recommends the appointment of Allison Ormsby. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And for the Urban Forestry Commission, the committee recommends that we reappoint Ed Macy and Patrick Gilbert and re-advertise for the third vacant seat. That's a motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, I just want to say, we are getting some amazing applicants, and it's difficult to come up with these recommendations. But we really sincerely appreciate the interest in being involved in the city government and really appreciate all the work. Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, we have a few people that have signed up for a public comment. Public comment, please state your name, and you have three minutes to speak. Same format as we've been using throughout the meeting. The first person to sign up to speak is Dan Glidden.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak with you. My name is Dan Glidden. I'm a volunteer with a group called Citizens Climate Lobby, which is focused on getting national legislation passed to address climate change. We work in a nonpartisan, respectful way to develop relationships with members of all political parties. Our approach is to energize citizens to use their political power to create the political will to get Congress to act. One way we do this is to get local citizens, businesses, and governmental bodies to endorse our approach to addressing climate change, which is to place a steadily rising price on carbon emissions and to take the money that is collected and return it to all citizens in an equal monthly dividend. In April 2018, all of you voted for a resolution supporting the concept of carbon fee and dividend. A bipartisan bill has now been introduced in the House of Representatives that embodies this approach. It is called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, HR 763. It has been endorsed by many local businesses, faith organizations, health organizations, SACE, the City Transit Committee, et cetera. Nationally, it has 75 cosponsors in the House, over half of whom also support the Green New Deal. And it is supported by the Nature Conservancy, Environmental Defense Fund, Natural Resources Defense Council, Dr. James Hansen, several large faith groups, et cetera. Support for the concept of carbon pricing is much broader and bipartisan, including President Barack Obama, Pope Francis, Bill McKibben, over 3,500 economists, all former chairs of the Federal Reserve, et cetera. Even Bernie Sanders, a staunch supporter of the Green New Deal, has said, "I am proud that we introduced the first piece of climate change legislation which called for a tax on carbon." Over the past few months, we worked with SACE to gain support for a city resolution supporting the bill, and they approved it unanimously. We were very disappointed to learn that the resolution was pulled from the consent agenda late last week. With the change coming in District 11, it is more important than ever to send a strong message to all candidates that this is an important issue for our community and their future constituents. We recognize that this, this bill alone will not solve climate change, and we support the efforts of all individual, individuals and organizations that are working to pass different approaches to addressing climate change and climate justice. We feel strongly that we need, we all need to work together to address the many aspects of climate change. We and many others on both sides of the aisle agree that the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act could be a huge step in reducing carbon emissions far exceeding our commitments in the Paris Accord. We urge you to place this resolution on the agenda and vote in favor of it. Your support in our efforts to act are critical. We would be happy to meet with any of, any, any of you at any time to further discuss this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next person signed up to speak is Tim Berthasell. Maybe you'll help me with the pronunciation.
Well, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for this opportunity. My friend and, and I both work with CCL. And just to add to what he's talking about, I'm a biologist and environmentalist-type person that cares a lot about the state of our environment locally and planet-wide. And it's, I've been looking at the various alternatives that have been proposed over the recent years. This Energy Innovation Carbon Dividend Act is a, is a real beautiful, artful piece of legislation that deserves all of our support, in my opinion. In the spirit of a one nation indivisible, it's a compromise, a first step. Doesn't solve the problem. But it's intended to begin a process of carbon, carbon emissions without burdening the population, especially the less fortunate folks that are living paycheck to paycheck. It's much more of a problem than simply warming or weather variability, or sea level rise, loss of property, and natural resources, of course. The problem, if you take it as a whole, amounts to a planetary extermination that we're going through right now. We really do need to begin a long road of progress. Begins with one step. This is not the end of the road, obviously, but it's the beginning. And if, if we can't get this supported in Asheville, I'm wondering where we can get that done. And it, a lot of folks are very pessimistic and psychologically stressed by the lack of action on the part of the higher levels of government. This would be a, a local thing that would put Asheville in a position of leadership on this topic where we deserve to be, because we care that much. Starting point only, a lot of more social issues and things to address along the way. But every journey begins with one step, and I'd love to see our council vote on supporting that piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Andrew Selwyn. He left. Okay, sorry, just got slipped in here. The next person signed up to speak is Gary Holcomb.
I'd like to speak with the mayor, the council. I live on Busby View Circle, you know, intersection with Rock Hill Road. And I've been, we've been trying to get speed breakers on the road. Three or four people's got killed on the road. They do 50 miles an hour up the road. Something's got to slow them down, you know? And I'm part Cherokee Indian, and I read in the Constitution on the first page, made me mad, because it said this eliminate of the savage Indians, to kill them. It's in the first page. And the reservations ought to be eliminated. That's a class four felony prison. And, you know, they have no rights at all. And most of the Indians have, you know, you know, they still, civil rights legislation going on, but they, they have nothing. But I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Just looking to see if that was, the road was in the city or not. The next speaker is Joe Minicozy.
Well, Esther, can we maybe follow up? And if it is in the city, ask your
Mr. Holcomb, I'm going to give your form to the city manager to look into the speeding issue on your road.
May I have the overhead? Okay, cool. I'm, I'm here to, for the record, Joe Minicozy, 62 Cortland Avenue. I've been having conversations with, with Brad about how to try to bring some solutions forward for Maxwell Street. And I'm kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place on this one. In 2005, this is the email that Scott Schufert sent me that basically says he's concluded that Maxwell Street is not a residential street. So that becomes the law at that point. We appealed it, the city vigorously defended that, and we have loading in the street because of it. So this isn't just a Reed Thompson issue, that these are other residents that have to deal with this unbuffered, unmitigated commercial activity in the street. So I have planners that say the street's commercial. I have a real condition of trucks in the street without buffering. Yet I tried to bring forward a solution, and that was removed to have that use and basically go back to the table as residential. I don't know what to do in that situation because there's, you, when you have commercial activity that's unbuffered, as a planner, you want to meet commercial with commercial. What's frustrating through the process is that this is the applicant's property right there. That's Maxwell Street, and it was colored blue, which allowed for commercial activity. While my plan was going through the process, staff amended to make it peach. While my plan was going through the process, staff amended to make it peach. Peach is primarily residential. This is the comp plan. I can't bring forward a solution if the overarching guide says it has to be residential. Now, as a planner, I can't find the competency in that decision. I can't professionally say that that's a wise decision when you have an open, unbuffered, active, commercial use. On top of that, it violates the sub-area plan, which calls for mixed-use development, the Broadway Plan. So we have this active inconsistency, and I've been asking your staff to address this. I've asked your planning department to address this. We have an open, inconsistent comp plan with a localized plan. Now, if staff was directed to do this by somebody outside of the purview or professional planner, then, then that is reprehensible, to do that and go around to the staff to make them make this decision. I've written, I've written a request to Todd. I brought this to Deborah's attention. I will continue to bring this to your attention. But we have to take the high road and find better solutions here. This has been going on since longer than the Vietnam War. Let that wash over you for a second. That war started and ended in less time. This has been going on twice as long as World War II. Can we not just be adults and work with the citizens to find a solution, because they can't live in a commercial activity? We can't force them to take that hardship. We're not going to change the loading bay, I got it. We're not going to get rid of the trucks, I got it. So now we have to bring a solution beyond Mr. Thompson to all of his residents that are dealing on that street. We have to find a way out. I can't give you other solutions. So you could direct the staff to change the comp plan, to make it better, and to deal with this known conflict. It only takes four of you. If we could do that, that would get us to a better place. I'm out of options. I can't bring another solution to Brad on this one. So, this is when I'm here, this conflict needs to be dealt with. And we need to deal with the commercial activity, and just realize it's not going to go away.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Xenia Sanjak. Okay, not here. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Yes, please.
I'm Vicki Lee, the Director of Just Economics and a West Asheville resident, and I am here to talk about transit. Last year, when we were advocating to fund the whole first year of the Transit Master Plan, we opposed splitting into two separate pieces, the hours and the routes. We opposed this for a couple of reasons. One, we just had this Transit Master Plan passed, and we thought, let's start off the first year of getting this thing rolling. We opposed it, two, because we thought we had the money. You had a new pot of money with the mission funding. And, three, we opposed it because we thought it added capacity to split, capacity needs to split it apart, right? As far as capacity is concerned, you all did the heavy lifting with capacity in the route changes. And, like, I'm hearing good things about the route changes so far, so I'm excited to talk to you about that once we get these evening hours. So, 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 yeah, the contractor, the RATP dev, whatever, is going to have to hire more drivers and change, do some scheduling changes, but that's what we've paid them to do. The city staff doesn't have a whole lot to do in terms of, or maybe I'm, like, misunderstanding in terms of the, the capacity. So to hear Jessica say tonight that it would be difficult to initiate the evening hours before October was, I, I don't even have words for it right now. I am asking you to dig into this and ask about that, because I think we do have the capacity. I think that, you know, I have said before that we should have been using the mission money to fund this, and, and I worked with Julie and Keith to bring you another plan for funding tonight, to make sure that it's there for, for next year. When I talked to Deborah Campbell in October, I asked about what is the lead time that we need from the time that you allocate funding to the time of implementation? And Ms. Campbell said it was, it was, it was not a long time. You know, we didn't need six months of planning in order to, like, once you guys make that allocation, to, to be able to implement that. So to hear Jessica say that is really frustrating, and I am asking you to dig into that and to put forth a budget amendment. We have multiple ways to pay for it for next year. It's not going to cost a lot this year. So let's advance evening service hours and not get behind in the implementation of the Transit Master Plan that you all passed in July of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we have a closed session. Motion.
I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 11A1. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute, Section 143 through 318, 10E, and North Carolina General Statute, Section 160A through, dash, 168. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the handling or settlement involving the following matter: City of Asheville versus Parkway Court LLC. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 11A3. Also, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 11A6.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will adjourn from the closed session. Thank you.